Good evening, everyone. Tuesday, September 25th, and record board meeting is called to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Morgan, here. Trustee Wilson, here. Trustee Brooks, present. Trustee McMillan, on. Trustee Page, here. Trustee Brown, here. And Mayor Covington, present.
Please stand with the pledge of allegiance.
To the God of the United States of America, in the due regard, for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to table the minutes until the next meeting.
Thank you. Roll call.
Trustee Wilson, both sides. Trustee Wilson, aye. Trustee Brooks, both sides. Trustee Page, aye. Trustee Brown, aye. And Mayor Covington, both sides.
This time we'll have general public comment. Visitors are always welcome to all public meetings of the Board of Trustees. To comment on an issue, persons wishing to speak will be called upon by the mayor. During Section E, general public comment, interested party will stand, identify themselves, and make their comment. In order to give proper consideration to all items on this agenda, the mayor will limit participants in a debate and will close off retracted, repetitive, irrelevant, or abusive remarks. Please be advised that the village has adopted a public, or a policy on public comment that limits speakers to three minutes. Thank you.
Mr. Albert Shaw.
Good evening, Mayor Covington, the Board of Trustees.
Good evening.
First of all, let me apologize because one of my church members passed away and I'm gonna have to go to that wake-its at the same time as this board meeting. So when I leave, I hope you won't consider me disrespectful. The reason that I'm here tonight is, I'm currently living at 729 Wright Road. So if you're familiar with the parable of the prodigal son, the prodigal has returned. With that in mind, I would like to ask the Board to consider the possibility of rehiring me as an economic development specialist, as the Board did in 1987. It's been 31 years, but I still have a number of ideas and projects that I think that upon the Board's review, you would be in agreement that these are good things for the quality of life of the village of University Park. So that is what I'm asking of you, if you would consider taking me in as an economic development specialist. That was my original type.
Oh, yes, I remember. Thank you. We can't address that right now publicly, because it's a personality issue. We will, someone will talk back to you. Next person is Mr. Rice, Johnny Rice.
I'm coming for this, this village up out the idea of building, instead of building a new school in Crete, in University Park, I think that that would be over some burden on the children who live on the east of 394 in Crete. We, I, we agree that they need a new school because that school is turning, that elementary school is going down and needs to be basically destroyed and they need a new one built for those children, for those kids over in that area. But I also want to say that if they don't want to pour money in our area, then I think that nobody should get anything. We could all save some money, they don't get a new school, they can stay in, they're turned out, their school falling apart, and we can stay in ours. If they want to be vindictive. But I also would like to state that I don't want to weaponize the kids like they're doing. I want us to go high and let them go low, let us go high and think about not only our kids, but the kids in Crete, little kids in Crete. Okay? And that's pretty much it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone? Yeah, my heart totally, Mr. Rice, we've had many conversations about that, so I totally agree with that. Okay, next person is Deborah Strohm.
Good evening, Mayor, Board, those present and those viewing. Being the, excuse me.
Thank you for that.
Excuse me. Being the compassionate deputy registrar that I am, I just wanted to announce that there are some registration dates set up for different drives throughout the community. I'd like to pass on one of the flyers to you. They will also be posted at the PK's pantry. They'll also be posted at the train station. That's kind of like the norm of what I do when I do a drive. But just to put it out there, there'll be a drive on Friday, this Friday, at Maple Leaf Apartments. Then there'll be one that following Saturday at Governor's House Apartments. There'll be one that Saturday also at New Cut's Barbershop. And again, on October 1st, on, at Maple Leaf and Governor's House. I only have two more dates set up at Crete Moni High School. So even though today is National Voter Registration Day, looking forward to registering somebody from University Park. And if anyone knows of anyone, please pass this information on to them.
Thank you. Um, Strohm, there, I know I'm a deputy registrar and I know we have other few. So I know they're doing a lot. I know CCC's having some. I know, as a matter of fact, they're having JB out here in October, they're having a drive and to get out the vote, wave the blue. I think they're having something, I know something's happening this Thursday about that, too. So, um, everyone, I would appreciate, you know, register to vote is real important, very, very important. Like Michelle Obama said, would you have your grandmother to pick out your clothes? No, I don't think so. So why would you let someone else run your life and what happens in your life? So it's so important for you to vote.
And, I'm sorry.
Anyone that's, you heard the announcements? If you are not, you can register online, you can register in your home. I have a hashtag, you can go on that, load that down on your phones. Make sure there's all kind of avenues to do that. So I appreciate that.
Now, I'm glad you brought it up about the upcoming, I think you said, the blue wave or something?
Yes.
And JB.
There's several calling. There's several calling. There's one going Thursday night, and I know, um, what is it? Democratic Party is hosting one here.
Okay. Because the dates I was giving for both of those events go past October 9th.
He is doing the 20-something.
The 20th, October 20th was what I was told. Yeah. Okay, but thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you for what you do. And the lead of women voters is doing something. I spoke to them today, and they're doing something as well. That's okay. Wilson, Governor's statement. Okay, having no more general public who wants some action items, unfinished business, which is none. F2, new business, first and second and third reading, Norton's of Village University Park, Willaca Counties, Illinois, terminating the designation of tip 3 tax increment finance district in the redevelopment project area and dissolving the special tax allocation funds related thereto. Is there a motion? So who? Move by trustee. Trustee, ooh, goodness, I'm sorry. Theo Brooks, and second by, no, I love you, baby. No, not that much. Oh, no, you're here. Questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none? Roll call.
Both sides.
Trustee Wilson, aye. Both sides. Trustee McMillan, both sides. Trustee Page, aye. Trustee Brown, aye. And Mayor Covington, both sides.
Thank you. F2B, a motion to approve the settlement in case number 2017 CH 1809 with the Board of Trustees and the University Park Police Pension.
Mayor, I'd like to move to table this till the next meeting.
Okay. Is there a second? Second by trustee. Questions, concerns? Roll call. I'm sorry, you take.
Trustee Wilson, aye. Trustee Brooks, both sides. Trustee McMillan, both sides. Trustee Page, aye. Trustee Brown, aye. And Mayor Covington, aye.
Okay, yes. Okay. On F2C, so that's a motion to approve the April 27, 2018 certificate of reimbursement project cost for 500 crossing drive, subject to striking any reference and interest incurred on and redevelopment project cost, and approve payment of extra 500 crossing LOC in the amount of $479,041.22 for reimbursement pursuit of the redevelopment agreement and for said certificate for the 2015 calendar year, 2014 tax year in the amount of $238,557.87 and for the calendar year, 2015 tax year in the amount of $237,483.35 with no payment being made or in any claim interest. Is there a motion?
When you were reading the motion, you said $479,000, it should be $476,000.
I'm sorry, $476,000. Correct. So who? Move by trustee Milton Page, second by trustee McMillan. Comments, concerns, questions? Hearing none? Roll call.
Trustee Wilson, both sides. Trustee Wilson, aye. Trustee Brooks, both sides. Trustee McMillan, both sides. Trustee Page, aye. Trustee Brown, aye. And Mayor Covington, both sides.
F2D, resolution of the Village University Park, Willaca Counties, Illinois, authorizing and approving the acquisition of an 11-foot reversible snowplow from Inkling Manufacturing Corporation. Is there a motion? So who? Move by trustee Brooks, second by trustee McMillan. Questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none? Roll call.
Both sides. Trustee Brooks, both sides.
Trustee McMillan, both sides. Trustee Page, aye. Trustee Brown, aye. And Mayor Covington, both sides.
37?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. F2E, resolution of Village University Park, Willaca Counties, Illinois, authorizing and execution of an annual lake management contract by in between the Village University Park, Willaca Counties, Illinois, and so to lake management for the maintenance of the Western Avenue Road Pond, I'm sorry, Western Avenue Pond. Is there a motion? So who? Move by trustee Brooks, second by trustee McMillan. Questions, concerns, comments?
Yeah, question, I thought.
Yes, sir.
When we had the committee of the hold, we also talked about including Pine Lake. Is that gonna be a separate quote downstream?
Trustee, they did come out and evaluate Pine Lake. They did chemical pH tests to the lake, there's no chemical issues. Also, Pine Lake has a couple of other issues that we have to address as far as the deck areas that have to be remodeled, demolished and remodeled, and various different things like that. I did speak to Director Richardson, we want to kind of do that separately because there's various issues we have to address at that area, including the bathrooms and various other things. So we want to kind of bring it back to the Board in like of a package deal and dealing with all that instead of just the water itself.
I represent trustee Wilson. If I recall, the committee of the hold, meaning it was a list of things. One was, that I recall off the top of my head, I'm trying to find in my notes, we were supposed to look at the dye. We were supposed to get three quotes, even just for that one pond. And I thought we were gonna get a summary before we added it to the agenda to show that we did the three quotes.
So just to address that, Director Richardson did call me in regards to your request. He did contact other companies. The other companies were not willing to travel this far to treat the ponds. And I did verify that when I came back into the office on Monday in regards to that. So that's the reason you don't have the three quotes in regards to the pond work. As far as the dye, Director Richardson can answer that question. But anything as far as three quotes being required and those things, we did attempt to go out and do that. This is actually the only organization that's willing to come this far to do it. The other organizations are far out, and this is a very specialized type of treatment that's being done, so it's not readily available in the area. But Director Richardson can speak on the dye and the other requests.
Water's edge is too far away, they didn't want to give us a quote, they wouldn't come out and treat. Because water's edge is a pond maintenance.
Water's, water's edge, I spoke with them, and they did not want to take on the quote because they do, they do not dive. The companies we've contacted, we have underwater work that has to get done, and they dive. Solitude and a few other places, they recommended Solitude because they come across from Indiana, which was the closest branch. But they, a lot of companies won't dive, is what we need. And the dye factor of it, we do not need it. Speaking with Solitude and EPA, we don't need it right now. We need to clear out the fungus first. So I didn't bring it back to the table.
Water's edge, they, you said they dive?
They do not dive.
Okay.
They do not dive.
And we don't need it because we're only talking about, do we need diving?
No. In Western Pond? Yes, that's what Solitude has done, that's why it is cleared up so fast. They have been here twice, and they dive underwater and they clean out from underneath. That's what we need there.
Okay. The next question was the dye?
The dye we do not need. That's why I didn't bring it back to the table. To color the pond. The dye is just to color the water.
So in the quote, okay, I'll let somebody else ask while I look for my notes. Okay.
Trustee, yeah, the dye was an option. It was an option with additional cost to it, so. It was my sense that you didn't think that was a good idea, so that's why I didn't bring it up again.
Okay, regardless.
You'd be an EPA expert, so.
So my concern is here, even though you, they said they wouldn't, we couldn't, we should still have that in writing, that they denied it or their excuse to show that we did go out for three and make a statement to say that this is too far, just to have it on the record.
Director Richardson, what's the price of the contract? You know it off the top of your head, what's the cost?
It's $430 a month.
What's the yearly cost?
Uh, five grand, $51.60.
So first, and me and Madam Mayor, we had this discussion. Quotes are not mandatory at certain dollar points. And I did speak to Madam Mayor thorough, thorough about this subject. If it's the Board's prerogative, the Board would, I would ask that the Board change the ordinance to require quotes at a certain price point because it makes it difficult. Because we're saying for this particular project, we want a quote, but then we have other projects that are at similar dollar amounts and then no quote is required. And it gets very, so at this point, a lot of things that the Department of Public Works does, I tell them, just go ahead and go three quotes because, you know, trustee Wilson asked for three quotes and then, you know, try to be productive, and I'm saying this in a positive way. You know, try to be productive and get the quotes, you know? But the ordinance doesn't require the quotes, you know? And so, you know, then we get to a point, if you want to do RFP in a closed bid, and it doesn't even meet the dollar point to do it. And I'm not saying that as an excuse, Mayor, but that is just a general conversation that we had.
Understand yourself, but however, if it's an emergency, I know we've had it before, that if it's an emergency, we know we have to act on it. If it's a life dev situation or some emergency that will be life endangered, that's true. But maybe we do, I'll talk to the Board when we have another workshop or whatever to see if it's necessary, if they will prefer that, that we get quotes. And then that way you'll understand it will be so kind of.
Madam Mayor, can I be recognized?
Yes, sir.
What is that quote minimum that we need for approval for the Board?
So for, for road projects, typically is anything over $20,000 for road projects. For issues related to longstanding contracts, I want to say the dollar amount's 10, I can be corrected on that. I believe the dollar amount is 10. And then the approval of services, anything $5,000 and under, the village manager has authority to approve, really doesn't require Board approval, anything $5,000 or under. But I always prefer, because of the scrutiny that the village has been put through, that it's still go on the agenda, and still, the Board still have visibility of it, so they can understand what's going on, you know, with the village, especially with the pond and Western Pond, with residents have been constantly complaining about that for significant a long time. So I want the Board to have visibility to understand what's going on. If it's the Board's wishes to do quotes on certain things, as long as it's noted, that's fine. The issue here, honestly, is not our attempt to not do it, there are just other vendors that were not willing to come out and service. And like I said, I did verify that with Director Richardson.
Trustee Wilson?
Thank you for that explanation. That makes sense, we understand. Okay, I have my notes. So we talked about more quotes, we understand that. The other was, is the dye eco-friendly, so we're not gonna use the dye, right? Okay? And the third one was, we weren't sure if you have to dye or you can do biological augmentation. Did you find out about the augmentation?
No, I didn't find out about that because when the man came out, they actually did a dive on Monday, and we discussed it, and he told me that our water is clear. So I didn't go on further with him due to what he said we didn't need really to do.
So how?
And we have, we have no, no life in that pond as of now, anyway. That pond has not been stocked or fed in quite a few years like Pine Lake. I know, I know.
There's nothing in there.
Those are frogs. Whatever's coming up is, trust me, is not.
Okay, so, so how long will it take for what they do when they dive to clear the lake up, that pond up? Because it's taken, it's taken, I mean, initially it started, you could see a difference, but now it's seemed like it's slowing down.
Well, actually, I'm sorry.
The augmentation was to keep that from reoccurring. So they, it started cleaning, is this gonna be, how long is it gonna take for them to clear it up? Will augmentation keep it clean? Will what they're doing keep it clean? Because that's what they, that's why they quoted us this augmentation, to keep out the bacteria since we don't have fish.
Correct. I'm glad you asked me that, trustee Wilson. I sent Chief Village Manager Pete an email yesterday while we were out there. The pond has cleared up from the top surface. The machine has been running for approximately 20 some odd days since their first dive. But that augmentation quote was something totally separate. That quote would be for me doing it on a monthly routine basis. But in their contract, they're coming twice a month for six months, and then they're coming once a month. So they will be here every month out of the year. So they will be handling it.
To dive?
To dive, yes, yes.
Sure, sure. Trustee Brooks?
Just a dumb question. Why don't we put something like carp in there with another fish, like we have in other lakes, to just have bottom feeder so we wouldn't have to go through it?
So, so at the end of the day, I mean, that would be the plan. Prior to doing that, there's so much lack of, first, before the village obligates themselves to do that, we have to make sure that the villages, the pond is at a place where it can take fish and life in there. You know? And it hasn't been maintained for so long. And I'm gonna be honest with you, this issue with the pond has been very longstanding. Residents have been blowing up my phone over the last month, which is why I had Director Richardson, because customarily, Public Works would deal with it themselves, they'll purchase the chemicals, they'll drop the chemicals, and then we'll move forward. I said, we were getting so many complaints from residents, go ahead and call a professional firm to go out there and see what the issue is and get it resolved. But once we get the pond to a place where that can happen, that would be the plan, to put life there. But we just want to make sure it gets cleared up and gets, gets maintained properly and have proper maintenance on it. So if you put something in there, it's gonna live.
When was the last time it was maintained, would be my last question? The last time somebody did something to that pond?
I mean, we put chemicals in there this year. I mean, but as far as like going in and diving and all that, when's the last time you put a boat out there?
Thanks to the fire department. We've been feeding by, by lakeside. So we get a bag, we throw it in. The difference is, is that that pond has never been dreaded before. Someone needs to go actually in that water, and dive, and kill. We've never been capable of that. The fire department has given us a, what's that thing? Like a little rope that we can go out there. But now we're at the fact where I'm sending two and three men out in the water because somebody has to be on land. So the maintenance and the time that we spend on that boat, and also the, the electrical factor of that pond, handling that, all of this is a part of that contract that we do not have to do anymore. And they dive, we're not diving.
When was the last time?
When was the last time? Right, I just, I'm trying to get a date.
That they were here?
Are we finally getting something done? I guess that's the basis of that question.
Oh, yes. We had, we had our second treatment this past Monday.
Second treatment?
Second treatment, which is really clearing it up. We did a, a two-treatment program.
So I think what trustee Brooks is asking is, when's the last time somebody from DPW physically went in the boat and out to the pond?
Four years.
They tried to clog, tried to unclog that pond?
Because it, right, before, was it before the new trustees?
Hello.
Maybe I can go first. Was it before Curtis and Liz and myself got up here, has it been touched before then? No, thank you, that's what I need to know.
Been a long time.
I'm just checking.
Multiple years. And also, another point of topic that, just speaking, just candidly, my question, and honestly, is based on his history. When that subdivision was built, I don't understand why the village took responsibility for that pond when typically, you know, when you have a pond in the vicinity of a new development, you have an association that maintains everything. And so that was the biggest kind of hurdle I was dealing with, with Director Richardson. I'm like, well, why historically, why do we have responsibility for that pond when this pond was actually developed as a retention pond for a, for a development? And so, you know, again, I got those questions answered, so, okay, now we're at a place where we're forced to have to maintain it. But I had to do a lot of background research as well.
Now, you said the total for this is how much exactly?
51.
Now, the one at Pine Lake, I know we have a pavilion there, and it's gorgeous, it used to be. So that's gonna have to be revised, everything is gonna have to be redone, all that woodings, the benches, the bathrooms.
A mess. So, so, yes, it is a great mess, and there is a grant that we talked about that was given, we're giving back because we don't have the match for that currently. And I actually spoke to Director Richardson and asked him about the priorities. We discussed the priorities of Pine Lake. You know, the biggest priority is infrastructure. We need to get those decks repaired, we need to get those bathrooms repaired. At that point, once we get that infrastructure taken care of, then we focus on the lake and putting fish in it and going forward. But I want it to be comfortable for our residents to use. And that deck area has been closed for a significant amount of time because it's unsafe. It's wood, it's collapsing. It's unsafe. And if we're gonna do something, I think we have to focus on the infrastructure of that lake prior to going forward and doing other things. Because what is the point of treating the water and feeding the lake when the infrastructure's falling apart? And we look at the census, and how many residents actually go there, it's very low at this point because there's nothing really for them to do other than sit next to the lake and fish and get eaten by bugs. You're correct, trustee Wilson. So we have to look through a grand scheme plan in kind of implementing Pine Lake and what we want to do as far as maintaining it and building it back up to the premier lake it was at one time.
Thank you. All right, and I would love to see that and estimate of that because people love that pond.
Yeah, I work on it personally. Yeah, I, I work on it personally.
I appreciate that, thank you. Okay, with no other questions, concerns, roll call.
Trustee Wilson. Both aye. Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Both aye.
Trustee McMillan.
Both aye.
Trustee Pay.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Mayor Coven.
Mayor, that's resolution oh, twenty eighteen dash thirty-eight.
Thank you. F two F, resolution supporting local schools in the Village University Park. Is there a motion?
So moved.
By Trustee of the page, and second by Trustee Wilson. Okay. Um, this is a resolution that the Village University Park is supporting local school, which is, um, we've heard it over and over and over about CSK, and we're supporting this, and I talked to a young man that worked for the governor's office, not this governor, um, Governor Quinn, very, very informative, very educational on this, and he gave us a lot of information, he was gonna try to make it tonight, but he was unable to, he called me, and he said he'd be glad to help, he has a lot of information that he's going to share with us, that will assist us even further to support this effort. So, and we'll be adding something more to the resolution, we're gonna put an additional thing on it that he knows about that can help us a lot. So we'll be sharing that with the school board, and I'm really, really happy that I ran into him Saturday. So we're gonna do this, and then we're not gonna stop at this point. Gonna be more information he can share with us. Okay? Roll call.
Trustee Wilson. Both aye. Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Both aye.
Trustee Pay.
Aye.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Mayor Coven.
Aye.
Mayor, that's resolution four, twenty eighteen, that's thirty-nine.
I'm sorry, dash what? Thirty-nine? Thank you very much. Okay. Attached for your approval is a listing of the general operating expenses for the Village University Park that occurred on August fifteenth through September twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen. General funds is two hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Road and bridge fund, twenty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-three dollars and six cent. Town center fund, twenty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirty-six cent. Payroll fund, seven thousand, thirteen dollars and seventy-five cents. Totally two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and forty-two cents. Is there a motion?
So moved.
By Trustee Brooks, second.
Second.
Second by Trustee Nelson Pay. Questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none?
Yeah, I just have, just one question.
Yes, sir.
And it involves, I punched a hole apart of it, but it's, uh, the check that ends with eight oh three, uh, term seal, road striping, for seventeen thousand, I was wondering what striping design?
So that was striping of Burnham, uh, Blackhawk, Olmstead, and that's paid for out of MFT. So that's coming out the road and bridge to, uh, that, that took place about three or four months ago.
Okay. Mayor Coven. Yes, sir? Question?
Yes, sir? Yeah, I hear that one more. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, just a second. We'll finish.
For, uh, check one oh two seven twelve, uh, this is M and J Underground, repairs for a water main break. I was just wondering what, what the responsibility is for Aqua versus the village when it comes to water main breaks?
One one six one? What is the check number?
One oh two, seven twelve.
One oh two.
It's on, on page three of, on page one it says, it's on the third page.
Is that be immersive?
Yeah, one oh two, seven twelve, it's M and J Underground Inc., repairs from water main break.
Right, which was a water main break at the town center. Oh, that's that, we had a water main break on the village's property in the town center in the rear of the town center. That was emergency water main break that we had, it ended up damaging the transformer, I sent an email out to the board. When M and J was digging, they ended up hitting the power line and, and leaking, uh, oil from the transformer that had to get cleaned up. We had to pay for that water main break, because that occurred on the village's side of the property and not Aqua's side. So this break was actually in a, in a rear parking lot, not on the road.
Yes, Trustee Wilson?
If they hit it, they won't?
No, so they hit it, the water main break broke on its own, but when they were digging, Julie did not mark properly, and they hit a power line, which ComEd required to come out and cause the hazmat situation, cause the oil leaked and went to the, but we didn't, we're not paying for any of that. We're only paying just to repair the water line that occurred naturally.
Yes, I was out there, that day, ComEd was very, very complimentary to us. And, and I was speaking of that water main breaks, we wanna thank, I wanna thank the police department, and, uh, on that, on that water main break that was there on Blackhawk, there was no cost to us, that damage that they did, the Sandra Drive, they came out and fixed that immediately, and I thank you for getting on there. Although, uh, he was having a hard time in the office until I came in there and he said, you're gonna tell me what? The mayor's here. And they fixed it immediately. We were really happy about that, so there was no cost to us on that one, correct?
On Blackhawk?
Yep.
No, that's, that's Aqua, that's all on Aqua.
I'm just saying that for the public.
No problem. Any water main break that happens on the road, that happens on the side of the street, uh, on the village's easement, that's covered by Aqua. Anything that happens outside the village's easement, that's on the resident. So village will never cover anything.
Let's just say a little clarification, I totally understand it, but you know, sometimes the people.
I know, Mayor, I'll just explain it for the public.
Yes, please, I appreciate that. Trustee Wilson, and then, um...
Just one last question. I, I know I asked for it, it's coming, but I just wanna keep it in the foreground. So when we get, um, bills payable and receivable, can we have it separated so we can see what monies is coming out of the general fund, what monies is coming out of road and bridge, what monies is coming out of town center fund? Cause it's, I see it split up into two, um, one is for a total of one eighty, and the other one is for a total of eighty-nine and change, but...
Mayor, uh, well, Madam Trustee, it's actually broken down in the truck summary page, if you go on the check summary page, it, it, it's broken down with, by fund.
Yes.
But you want it written on the?
No, it's the other page, the other back, the back.
Yeah, that's like a...
Let me add, let me add, let me say this. I, I don't have a problem, uh, doing that at all whatsoever. What I would ask is, um, maybe we can meet offline, so that you can like delineate exactly what you're looking for, and then I can get it exactly how you want it.
Okay.
I just don't wanna assume, so I'm gonna get it exactly how you want it.
Mr. Brown?
Good work.
Okay, well, check number one oh two, one oh two, seven two four, that Will County Treasure, uh, agent, that has nothing to do with, uh, the misappropriation of tip funds?
No, no.
Correct, thank you, sir.
There's no misappropriation of tip funds that need to be paid back at this point, but no, it's not.
Okay, thank you.
Will County Treasurer does not have any litigation in it.
Okay. Okay, at this point, I turn to report, um, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, roll call on bills payable.
Both aye. Trustee Wilson.
Both aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Both aye to pay the bills.
Trustee McMillan.
Both aye to pay the bills always.
Trustee Pay.
Both aye to pay the bills always, always.
Trustee Brown.
I'm staying.
Mayor Coven.
Both aye, thank you. This time I would report, um, I'll, instead of I'll bill with the department's. First.
Madam Mayor, Board of Trustees, I just wanna report, for the month of September, and today is just the twenty-fifth, we have went through three hundred, three hundred tons of asphalt, repairing roads. Just remember, we bought a four-ton hot box, and we've gone through three hundred tons as of today. So the mill closes, supposed to close October first, weather permitting, so we are steady, um, we're steady going.
So with that said, the, you've already outlined which streets and everything, where they're, which ones you have priority, where you're doing that, all that?
Where we are right now, yes.
Are you using that form, I guess?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
I appreciate that. Okay, and make sure that, well, you can do, that's the best you can do with temperature and the weather, you're trying to beat out the weather and the snow, I'm sure.
Well, the plant is scheduled to close October first, but it's weather, weather permitting.
Right.
On an average, we do about ten tons a day. It takes us longer to go get it than...
The hot box has been very good.
Yes, cause now we can take the box directly, directly there, yes.
Thank you so much. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor, Trustees, general public. Uh, we are wrapping up September, which means October is right around the corner, which for the fire department is our big month for, uh, fire prevention activities and visits to the schools. We've got all our supplies in, that were delivered at no cost, uh, to the taxpayers, uh, through donations to our, uh, National Fire Safety Council donations that we received from mainly businesses in the industrial park, along with, uh, others here in, in the town center complex. Those supplies have arrived, and we're getting them all packaged up for the schools. Uh, we have a, uh, retirement coming up in the fire department. Lieutenant Tim Roach is actually working his last day, uh, today, uh, with the fire department, after a combined career of thirty-four years of service to the village and the community. Uh, at some point later on, uh, in this year, we're gonna invite Lieutenant Roach and DuHosky back to, uh, honor them with their resolutions and their retirement badges, and, uh, we're gonna work on them with their schedules and travel and things like that, but, uh, that will be hopefully coming up, uh, before this calendar year ends, and, uh, that's, that's all I have.
Question. How are you doing now that you have the code enforcement? What, how are you doing as far as inspections, and what have you to inspect there?
We are currently doing what we can to maintain code operations as they are right now. Our biggest challenge right now is because of, of retirements and other changes, my department is down four personnel right now. So we're doing what we can, we're putting things together as they come up, and we're looking to get our replacement hires and get us up to full staffing, and then really get after this thing, starting in, uh, hopefully, maybe at the end of this year, but definitely by the start of twenty nineteen.
I was at the village hall Friday, and I know, I went to code enforcement, and I saw some disturbing pictures, and what they're going through is awful, it's just awful, but I'd appreciate that, that we spoke about it, the retreat, to do the automation as far as, I want everything automated, hate paper, uh, so that when you do that in the way you used to do, you can go out and automate the inspections and download it on the server, if we can do that, that would be great, but we'll talk about it another day, but I really wanna make sure we go automation with those inspections.
Yes, it's, it's, it's definitely a priority for the inspectors in the field, and also, um, you know, internally for, you know, file storage and, and records, to be able to store files electronically, recall them a lot quicker, and access them from basically anywhere.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Trustees, and, um, general public. Um, the police department has been rather busy as well. First, I wanted to let everybody know, we have been experiencing, um, a rash as far as people, um, targeting our vacant homes. So whenever we see something suspicious, uh, whether it be vehicles, people hanging out, even if it's kids or whatever, wanna make sure that we, um, make that call to the police department, so we can get over there and prevent some of the damage that's being done to the, to some of the vacant properties. And like I said, they are targeting the vacant properties for the most part. Okay, um, on the positive side, we have been working with the schools, uh, we've been, um, going through training, and also attended some of the drills that we've been, um, going through for the active shooter classes, and all the officers and the surrounding towns, as well as, as our village, uh, have been present, and have been, uh, required to attend the, um, active shooter training that's going on throughout the district. And then here at the middle school, um, we have also been in, involved with their drill. Uh, we've been getting, um, a couple of different requests from several of the businesses in the industrial park, that are also want to go through the training. It's a, it's very good training for us as well, you know, experience for us. A lot of times, we try to set it up where there's obviously not a cost to us, a lot of, of the businesses have actually, um, requested our help and offered to pay, you know, for the officers to come out and train, um, the employees there, cause that is where where this takes place for the most part, when it comes to, unfortunately, uh, with active shooters. So that's basically what we've been working on as far as our training for the month, that's just about it.
And I would like to apologize to you about the test, there's a, let the board know, there, the Black, uh, the South suburban regional mayor's caucus, Black Mayor's Caucus, has formed, we meet every month, and we formed a safety committee, so with all our villages, so we can work together, cause we cross lines, and we're trying to do something that's more cost-effective for our villages. So we have put, um, Deputy Chief Debbie Wilson and Chief Pay to be part of that, and it's, they're meeting and working on different equipment that they have, we don't have, and they're trying to work together, all seventeen mayors, we've been working, doing this for about a year now. So they're part of these meetings, and they're going out and seeing how better we can save, be safety, balance for our community, exchange data, creating a database, so I wanna thank you all for attending that, and sorry they had canceled it and tell us, but you missed that meeting, but you didn't miss it, it was, like you said, you went there and it was canceled. So, but they will be meeting next month, and I'll make sure you guys get the information. But thank you for participating, cause that's very, very important, it's a lot of resources for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Trustees?
Good evening, everybody. Good evening. I went to the IML conference, and I took some notes down, took some notes down, like, I went to the, uh, TIF concerns, because they really, really confused me, the village is going through all these problems with TIFs. So I wanted to really understand them, because they were very, very confusing. And I just dropped a cou- chotted down a couple of notes, and this, this one says, it's more economical to expand a TIF than it is to allow a TIF to expire and recreate a new one. Now, I say that to say, the infrastructure that we need here, you know, with the roads and the sidewalks and the bridges, stuff like that, and you know me, I'm still with this overpass over there on Gunners Highway, cause that train is really messing up, and the, uh, the dormitories that's coming in to the school, these cars are really going back to back, it looks like we downtown. And we do need that overpass or underpass, I don't care which one it is, but we need it, and we need it bad. If we gotta build this place up, we need to. The TIFs that we have, we need to expand them, because getting new ones, it's not good, it's bad for us, we'd be out of more money. So what we need to do is, the things that this village needs, we need to start trying to build it and build it up. That's what I saw with that. And when it came to another class, it was about the agenda, and they were saying that they're getting ready to do some new constructions on those agendas, it's gotta be more than just one person, you know, making that agenda, they got a couple of trustees, mayor, you know, people like that. Trustees can listen to the people in the village, and see what they want to hear about. So I thought that was interesting, and the lady that was giving that, she said that she would get back to me, I gave her my card, and when they, they, they're working on new alternatives to put in that, uh, TIFs, I mean, not TIFs, the, uh, agenda. So those are the things that I got involved in, and looking forward to hearing more from the people.
Thank you for your report. Uh, and just FYI, first agendas, um, and some meet, some boards, they just came out with a law, I, IML, two years ago, and it stated that they had the Open Meetings Act law. Our clerk knows about that very well, and a lot of, it said that you cannot not have public not to speak, and some boards do not, but we always have that. And the same thing on agenda, I tell the board, if anyone wants to put anything on agenda, let me know, and I have received many, uh, things you've asked, I put on agenda. Uh, the other board, so we are adhered to certain rules that's not even accepted by others, but we do that.
Yes, I would just explain that, that's what they're gonna put into law now.
Right.
So that's a good thing.
Yeah, just like the Open Meetings Act, allowing people to speak, because I know several mayors that do not allow public to speak at their meetings, at their board meetings at all, but we've always adopted that.
Yeah, they, they said those things too.
And that came to law, so, thank you, appreciate it. Trustee Wilson?
Trustee Wilson?
Thanks, Mayor. So, Human Services Special Events, the chairperson's not here, so, we have, the Soul She-Roe Run has been canceled, it was scheduled for October fifteenth, so that, that's canceled, that will not be happening. Uh, Human Services Special Events will be putting on a fall festival, and that'll be October twenty-seventh, from four to eight, right here at Ninety Town Center. It will include a trunk or tree on the parking lot and then a couple surprises and then some activities on the inside. And it'll be a family event, so it'll be activities for the adults as well as children. So, Human Services Special Events is asking that the board all sponsor a trunk for the trunk or tree, and should it rain, the event will still continue, it will be moved inside as we've done in the past. So, uh, board consider providing a trunk. I went to Congressional Black Caucus, ooh, it seemed like forever goes, not this weekend, but the weekend before, and we spoke, we went to a couple conferences, two in particular stood out to me, and they were both about bringing, bringing events and, what's the word? Bringing events and activities for the youth. So, we, we met a lot of people on the panel, we talked to some people who already have programs set in place, we talked to a money person that can come, come help us fund it. So, once we looked through the plans, Curtis, I know we were talking about a different direction, so I, I'll keep you posted and include you on the communications, but once we look at the several different plans that they have, they have people in Chicago that are willing to come out and help, once we develop a plan or choose which one we like, we'll work with the money people, so we'll, we'll keep that coming. It was, it was, it was great, it's always great. Colin was there, it was, he, his seminar was great. So, um, just, just a little note about what's going on. So, maybe not, at the next board meeting, not committee at the whole, but the next board meeting, hopefully, hopefully we'll have something in place to bring to the village.
Trustee.
Whoa. I'm tired. Trustee Curtis McMullin?
First of all, I'd like to thank the General Public for coming out tonight. I think we need more representation of the General Public and it's all open, it's free to you. So, um, I would like to say that my partner and I campaigned on a change for this village. And this board, I'm very happy to say that the personality of this board is working fabulously right now and is working on all eight cylinders, right? And I'm very proud to be on this board here and it, and it allows me to do some things that we campaigned on. I'm very excited. Some of the things that we are doing right now that are, that's really important to the General Public, number one, we also mentioned that Pine Lake hasn't been worked on in how many years? You don't even know how many years, but we made a concerted effort with our director, Richardson, that things like that is working out. Matter of fact, I leave it up to Manager Pay to take care of all of the things that when I go to work, I don't have to worry about it because he's doing his job, that's what we hired him for. And he has a staff that he's working with and he's making progress here. And, um, the, the Fire Chief and the Police Chief, okay, I appreciate all the work that you've done. Now, um, with the pond on Western Avenue, we're working it, I don't know how we came to take over that, 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 that job of taking care of that pond, that retention pond, but we're doing an excellent job, we are working on it, and it just cracks me up, somebody's fishing in the pond, but there's no fishing. Well, you know, bless his heart, bless his heart, whatever, that's fine. Okay, so, um, and two weeks ago, we had a, considered the third airport, which is Oakfield, uh, we had an event that, uh, on the fifteenth of September, it was a Saturday fly-in. The chapter, EEA, Chapter Two-Sixty had a fly-in. And I really enjoyed that day. We had Neva out interviewing individuals, that was necessary for the community, you'll see it on the cable station very soon. But there's one thing that bothered me and I was out there all day, we only had one resident from University Park out there, this lady and her young son. And it was posted on cable television, but only one family from University Park experienced that fly-in, and they flew over thirty children that day, and only one person from University Park. So, everybody took advantage of it in the South Suburbs, and we had an opportunity to do it as well, but we failed to populate that particular event. But they give three events a year, and that was the last one for this year. So, if you want to expose your child to general aviation, you can't, and we have a beautiful airport, we should take advantage of it. So, um, that is my report for today, and I appreciate each and every one of you, and I'll talk to you soon.
Thank you. Trustee.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have one report and one comment. My report is that I have no report. And my second, my comment is that whoever's fishing there with their little boy, I hope they took the packaging and the price tag off of the fish they took home.
Okay, um, my report. I'm, I'm, I'm going to come to, that's my one. First, I want to, so, oh, I'm sorry, Dee, I'm sorry. Dee Jones, please.
Well, I could come after you.
Okay. No, I'm going to go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. I too attended the municipal league conference this past Thursday through Saturday. It was quite an experience because it had been a couple of years since I had attended the IML. I attended some very, very interesting sessions, starting with, and some of these things, our board might want to take a look at some of the changes that have come about in state law and some of the challenges that, some things that might prevent us from being challenged by the Attorney General on other updates to it. One session I attended, and I think I'll start with this one because I'd like to make some comments about, about it. Municipal elections, the good, the bad, and the ugly. As we're, we're aware, April second, twenty nineteen, is a consolidated election for University On the eighteenth, residents seeking office were allowed to begin circulating their petitions for election to the offices of the mayor, the clerk, and three trustees. They are all full for-year terms. Those of you who picked up packages at the Village Hall, picked up a packet with a letter that stated the requirements where you can go online, find all of the information that you would need to know as a candidate for municipal election. This year, I did something that I had not done for the last couple of years, and that was provide sample forms. Well, well, you know, I get to this class, the attorneys who were teaching the class suggested that that's something we should not do, and I said, I should not have listened to those people who said, well, Dee, I know you don't do it, but what if we don't have access to a computer? Go to the library.
Right.
But since I had begun it, packets had, were being picked up, I will not change it, but in the letter that's in the packet, on the second page, right under some suggested information that you should, uh, look into and make sure you're aware of it, is my disclaimer. So, please read it, and it says, please be advised that any information given from the clerk's office is informational only and not to be taken as legal advice. Therefore, I strongly recommend that you consult an attorney for legal advice regarding this electoral process. And I gave, in the letter, is the email address, is a website address for the State Board of Election, the Will County Clerk, and I did not put in the Cook County Clerk, but a couple of things I would suggest that you, if you're running for an office, please download the candidate's guide. It has all of the forms that you will need to file, with the exception of your statement of economic interest, that the county clerk no longer prints the paper statement of economic interest, so you would need to contact the Will County Clerk's office, and they will tell you how to file that statement of electronic interest electronically. You should also download and familiarize yourself with the election and campaign finance calendar. Might prevent you from getting in trouble if you've got a political action committee because there were certain values that you need to know. But if you get this candidate's guide or your attorney, then follow their advice, and if you ditched the forms that were in there that I put in the packet, won't hurt my feelings, but I did get those forms from the State Board of Election, just to say that. That was one. The other thing is, and another thing, effective public comments and citizen engagement. We adopted at the beginning of twenty seventeen, a public comment policy that, for the most part, is beautiful. The attorneys, you know, the things that they were sharing with the municipalities were, all of these things, we basically have in our policy for public comments. There are a couple of things that, um, the commentator felt that sometimes we forget the purpose of a board meeting by allowing too many times for citizen engagement while this board is trying to pass legislation. We do have a general comment portion where the public is not restricted from commenting on anything, and perhaps our board might want to look at including the agenda items. And either have one portion where they can speak, if they're speaking on agenda items, they can only comment on that item, but if they, in their public comments, talked about that agenda item, the board might consider letting the agenda portion be part of the board's discussion and the board taking action, because the purpose of a board meeting is for the elected body to take care of the village's business as they were elected to do and not necessarily dialogue back and forth with the citizens. And, you know, just address their comments, however, they also, and it's on our agenda in our policy, our board may or may not respond to a public comment because it is, as it says, it's a comment, and it's not necessarily a question and answer, period. Okay? There've been some updates, oh no, I'm not through yet. I said at the last meeting, I'm back. But there were some other updates in the Open Meeting Act and the FOIA Act, which are interesting and one has to do with the migration of the internet. So, there was a special session on dealing with FOIs over there submitted over the internet and how we search for them, and our presenter was our public access counselor, Ms. Pratt. So, that was quite interesting. And basically, that was it on that. And just remember, filing period for the April second election is December tenth through the seventeenth. The objection period, the last day for filing objections would be December twenty-fourth, which is Christmas Eve. So, the law allows that the last day would be the day that the municipality is open, which ours would be the twenty-sixth. So, the last day to file objections would be December twenty-sixth, and you can pick up petitions until December seventeenth. That's it.
Thank you. Um, I'll give a, I'll, right now I have a little one, then I'll go to the village manager because we're going to work together on something. I, I also, the Congressional Black Caucus been going since nineteen eighty-seven, um, but that was federal side then. But now, we, it was quite interesting, as Trustee Wilson said, there was, Colin was there and they had an open meeting mic for us to speak, naturally I got up to speak, and they were very, very interested in what I had to say, to the point, as Trustee Wilson said, they came up to me and they, I had several cards to support me, who want to do this hip-hop, it was a hip-hop conference, and it was all about a lot of things, topics of black women in office. It's, it's a global thing, however, they have, they share the same type of fashion, and they all have the same thing, and they talked about the veterans, homeless struggle, what they were going through. Uh, we talked about the meetings that we were having with Essence, we talked to Dyson, Earl Dyson, he was there, the owner of Essence Magazine was there with us, we just, the networking is just unbelievable and it just helps a lot. And this year, Cory Booker and Sarah Krammer, they were talking about how things, and they had a town hall meeting on different issues, when they were talking about people that, what they call the social media devil, in a sense. I had a personal conversation with a few mayors, we had our reception, African-American mayors and managers were there, and our topics were on how the so-called next doors and all those things are getting to the point that they're going to put a law bill against that and what it's doing and how dangerous it can be to some people and how it has some effects on it. I wanted to say that I was honored last Thursday to go to Mattson and University Park. I've said that we don't have money for social medias or we don't have a person to come out and do our, make phone calls to the Channel Seven to do that, we don't have that right now, but I paid the fee for University Park to be a part of the chambers fifty-seven, Chamber Fifty-Seven, and we were awarded, not Vivian, the Partner of the Year presented to University Park. I was very honored that we are part of that, and you see here now Olympic Fields, Park Forests, Richmond Park, University Park and Mattson. So, we're part of that chamber, I'm happy that this is an avenue for us to get things out when we need the communication person. I'm happy that this is an avenue for us to get things out when we need the communication person. So this was an honor for University Park to receive. There was other people there, just one guy's millionaire, he just, the resource there for us was just fantastic. And we all got awards there that day. Excuse me, I received three NOFOs, which is the Notice of Funding Opportunities. We are blessed and favored in the Villas and University Park. I am on the advisory committee and the representative of the University Park. That's, I say this over and over and over, it's been years. And having the connections that, it takes a lot of work sitting in this chair, just not that easy. Some people think it is, but you gotta work hard when you're here. You gotta make sure that University Park is out there. Our name was nowhere, our name is everywhere now. Our name is on the letterheads for South Suburban Mayor Managers, the Will County Mayor Managers, the African American Management Managers. We're global, we're local, we're everywhere. Our names are here now. And I sit on this advisory committee in Will County. And this is a grant, a disaster grant program, community grant, which I said is very good for the Villas and University Park. And it is zero that we will have to get, it's 100% funded. That's one. That's what disaster grant. Another grant is a public infrastructure program, 100%, no match. Another grant we have listed before is a block grant housing rehabilitation program. That is a no match. So we will be applying for these grants. And I'm happy to see that we're getting these. And it makes a difference when you go to these meetings and people talk to you and you network with them. And when things come out like this, they will beat you first. We have to stay connected and that's what it's about. Also, I think that's important. And basically, that's all I have to say. And I'll turn it over to the village manager and I'll talk after that.
So, good evening, everyone. I want everybody to mark their calendars for Saturday, October 27. The village was awarded a tree grant to plant 50 to 75 new trees in the village in various parts of the village, mostly on Amherst, where, of course, as we know, last year we removed a significant amount of trees and did not replant trees in the area. So it looks completely desolate of, of the natural habitat that needs to be there. Yeah, about 55 trees. So what I'm asking is, we got the grant, we got the workers, but we need volunteers. We need volunteers, residents, kids, organizations. If you could get enough volunteers to come out to assist in planting those trees, that would be great. They'd be on the job training. The group that's awarding the grant will have workers out there and hold a cultural list out there showing and teaching how to plant the trees. And I think it's gonna be a great time. And I've already, me and Gary have already had them obligate to plant 50 to 75 trees each year. As long as the village is removing diseased trees, they will continue to provide trees to plant, which I think is very important. We initially applied for the grant, we thought, in one year, when we discussed our issues and the action tour of the village, they are obligating themselves, at least for a multiple year program, in planting trees. There are no monies to remove trees, but they will provide fundings to plant trees. And I think that's very important. I, I too attended the IML last week and went to multiple classes, I think, that were very informative. One class was how cities can benefit from the Future Energy Jobs Act. Another class I took was the Business Case Study for Diversity and Inclusion, what we can learn from top performing companies. As well as, I attended briefly the TIF class and dealing with the TIF tips as Trustee Williams attended. And of course, I attended a seminar for public safety by public safety that powered FirstNet, where I was actually the speaker in that class for public safety personnel and implementing FirstNet in communities, which is really large these days. I attended 321, I think, before I say this, I think the fire chief would enjoy this in the slides. 321 left off a discussion on municipal use and legalization of drones in municipalities. Now, municipalities right now are using drones in a growing rate for public safety purposes, for code enforcement purposes, for public work purposes, to review aerial images of areas, wooded areas, forest areas, especially in the mixed urban rural area that we have in University Park. And there are fundings out there to get drones. And I will be looking to do that, as well as get staff trained in the use of them because I think it's a very important tool that can be used, especially for law enforcement at night with infrared and searching for criminals and ish people. I think that's very, very informative and important. And I know Trustee Brooks is giving a kick out of that. We'll train you to fly one, sir, because I know you don't want to do it. We discussed another thing, sister city relationships and economic development engine for your community. I think it's important that our municipality reach out to communities overseas and have partnerships and have sister cities overseas to partner with University Park. Number one, to stimulate economic development. And number two, to stimulate e-commerce coming in and out of the United States, especially with University Park having one of the biggest industrial parks.
Well, gee, you remember, we did, remember when we went up to, up north?
We did have that tour, yes.
We had the tour and those people were from India and from Japan. And we did have that intergovernmental understanding. And they came to view our various residents, our forest, Briskin Park, University Park and Madison. So we did do that and tried to collaborate with sister stations, sister cities. And I know the ones we had with the African American Mayor's Managers, we had a conference call. And I am engaged with that already. We're getting ready to talk about that, was with one of our African countries, Ghana and there was, oh, God. It was Ghana, Nigeria. So they have talked to us on that, yes.
You know, we did have a sister city.
I remember, I saw the books many, many, many years ago.
And during the coup, the whole town was killed.
Yeah, but yeah, we were going, we were entertaining that. And the drones too, I told you, well, Countrywide People's has them right now. And we, at our meeting, we were talking about that.
One, you know, the final part of my report is really a, the manager's financial report. I think a lot of residents have had a lot of questions since the forensic audit was released. And what I wanted to do is kind of display my thoughts, where I'm at, my opinion on everything and kind of move forward from there and kind of put the facts to the table, you know? From 2012 to 2016, the village University Park shifted nearly $40 million from the tax increment finance accounts into its general payroll funds. This is according to an audit that was conducted by IRH, by the village. While the majority of these transfers appeared to be made for legitimate TIF-related purposes, IRH determined that about 35% of the transfers, or nearly $14 million, were questionable. The audit's accuracy was somewhat compromised by the village's inability to locate pertinent financial documents, but the audit still has provided a blueprint for better understanding of how TIF monies were spent. If you can't find source documentation, either because it doesn't exist or is damaged or it was misfiled or is destroyed, it has to be listed on the forensic audit as either questionable expenditure or unverified expenditure. The 7.1 million found to have been diverted to the payroll fund was clearly improper. There's nothing the village can do, you know, to state otherwise. But, but some of that $6.8 million that was shipped in the general fund may end up being deemed impermissible if supporting documentation can be found. And the village is taking time to look for supporting documentation through past bank accounts, past transactions, and actually reaching out to vendors where payments were made. And that is an ongoing process. Despite the village's past practice of using TIF funds to plug budget shortfalls, past village officials always made sure there were enough funds remaining in their accounts to fully reimburse those businesses that stipulated their TIF agreements, even if those reimbursements were always not always paid on time. Our goal is to be very transparent and open with tax and bodies and communicate what's going on. If the village is wrong, then we're wrong. We can get it taken care of without a lawsuit. I think we're being proactive and transparent. It's when we're cryptic and shut these taxing bodies out is what turns into the problem. I can't sit here and tell you if the law was broken. Was it malfeasance, was it negligence, was it lack of understanding of laws in regards to TIFs? That's honestly up to law enforcement authorities to kind of define that. The village's financial mismanagement falls squarely on past village managers and finance directors, not the elected officials who have very little visibility of day-to-day operations and banking accounts. I would say our board did the very best job they could with the information that were provided to make an informed decision. While the forensic audit looked at only at TIF transfers from 2012 to 2016, I believe the practice of using TIF money to supplement the budget likely went back decades. I think these issues with TIF started way, way long ago. And I think it was a habit that was done because that was just a way of doing business in University Park. The village's TIF agreements tell the true story and will help you walk down memory lane. We all are in the process of working with the comptroller to come up to date with the village's financial report and requirements and hope to do so by early 2019. I have the utmost confidence and faith that University Park will recover from its financial difficulties. And we have already started making changes since, since my taking over as village manager. I think University Park is in a position where, where other municipalities can learn what not to do. And they need to follow our path in looking at a direction of what the village is going to do better. Our legislators ought to consider comprehensive TIF reform to avoid situations like University Park's from happening in the future in other municipalities. As you already know, the FBI has been looking into the village's finances for more than two years. But the agency's focus, focus on their probe is unclear. There have been no charges filed against any village employee or official as of today's date. It should be made noteworthy that I've been in touch with federal agents in recent months and I continue to share information with the agency in an effort to aid this investigation. It is my desire to have the individuals responsible for this conduct held accountable. And if there are elements of a crime committed, then those individuals should go to jail and be held to the highest standard of law. Because the residents of University Park deserve closure and accountability for this hardship that has directly impacted them. I've received phone calls in regards to the various terminology that I used in various news reports. Why I didn't use the term "the board" compared to, why I didn't use the term "trustees" compared to using the term "the board." Because when I speak of the board, I speak of the trustees and the mayor. I think it's very important that we be transparent and fair to everybody that sat on the board, past and present. Because they only did the job, the best job they could do based on advisement from finance directors and the village manager in office at the time. The board is responsible for passing legislation and policy. The board is guided by the office of the village manager, this being a managerial form of government. The board had its utmost faith and confidence in finance directors and the village managers that held offices during these periods of time. It was way, no way that any board member would know anything in regards to the situation unless they were having direct interactions with the village manager, which cannot be proven at this time. But I think it's important to know, while we're running into election season and we know a lot of negativity put out, I think it's important that the facts are put out in a fair and equitable manner. My chair is very hard to sit in. As the village manager, I have seven personalities that I have to manage along with personnel and department heads. I will not take any sides in regards to anyone sitting up upon the board at any time. I will not be wavered to make any statement that is untrue. And I will give every member of the board and my staff the utmost confidence and fair transparency in the operations of this village. I am in a position that I will continue to fight for this village, the staff and the members of this board if things are done wrong. If staff or members of the board do something that is wrong, they will be held accountable. As far as I'm concerned, as far as proper reporting, based on proper regulations and laws that occur. This village is moving forward, moving forward in a positive direction. I have faith that we will move forward in a manner that will be equitable to the residents of University Park. But the story must be clear. And I think it's this time, I think it was very important to provide this report for our residents that are watching, for our staff, as well as the members of the board that are sitting up here today. I thank you.
Thank you. And after that, I have a summary that I might narrate, that we have issues for years and our budget, however, we're working to make our wrongs right. We are working as a board and staff to put measures in place to avoid making same errors, to be more transparent to all. Some of those measures are planning, SOP, Standard of Operating Procedures, more scheduled combined meetings with finance and village board, team building workshops with the staff and the board, more importantly, automating documents that store them in a data cloud, scanning our documents that are on hand to file, identifying it in a category in a digital format, to work on making University Park paperless. Also, to make sure all payments are being able to pay online by credit card, debit card or check. This will create better checking balances and no mismanagement of funds. We are working for this to be done online. For those who are not comfortable with that, to come to the village hall to make payments, but use means of payment, not cash. Or if you have a Bit Investor, if you are a Bit Investor, then you can use your Bit Card. And these are the things that we're trying to put in place as the chief, um, I'm chief, as the village manager said. And it is quite expensive that we are blessed to come across a source to assist us and pay things in the villages organized. We're honored to have the board right now that understands that. I am free to call and talk to any board member up here. And they are the same with me. I like the organization that we're doing. We had a great retreat, first retreat, and I really appreciate it. Now I want to address the rumors. The rumor, the residents that the projects that have been seen for the past years were scheduled and they were inactive. There was a memo to update these projects in 2008. And I have that memo if anyone would like to see it. And nothing resulted from it. I, 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 along with the board, now activated them. All it took was to activate the I.R.T.A. and engineering, et cetera, to the timeframes along with the upcoming one of COMEd, which will happen Saturday, to replace the lights to LEDs, to eliminate the mistruth, she is doing this because of the election. It's not, it should have been done 10, over 10 years ago. To address cityscape. When it was first built and completed, the models were shown and no one was interested and complained that they were too small and expensive. They sat there over 10 years. We had some veterans that were interested and came to make a presentation here to show you of the successful ones they have for our veterans. However, we had some people that attended and they shared their disagreements with the veterans and they moved on. I am now contacting and talk to the, our attorney of another source to help us tear it down and level the land and we'll make, and we'll move from there. That will be reported on the board for, to talk to our board with the decision. The board will have, we had a great retreat. We share ideas and plans of how better to serve the residents. We are planning to cooperate with everyone that we can in this village. We're trying to work on one team. We're moving forward and I will address the rumors. And things that we're, you need to understand, these things were on schedule. The I-57 should have been done in 1996. The expansion they have over there by Governor State should have been many, many years ago. But as soon as I got on board, I jumped on those things and made sure. I sit on the planning committee with the South Suburban Mayor Managers. We have one for next year, 2019, is scheduled for what? The Sisera Project, it's a $1.5 million, $1,500, I'm mistaken. $1,500 is already in the lean and we have that already certified to go for 2019. So these things are scheduled, but no one took advantage of it or made it active. We're also going to work about our bus service that we're, we had a presentation done last, I mean, that was immediately the whole. So we're moving things that they should have been moved a long time ago. We're taking these things and brushing off the cobwebs and making it a reality. And that's what you have to do. And that's what we did. So if you have any questions, anybody at any time, feel free to call me. I'm always at disposal for Village and University Park. Every Friday, I'm at that village hall, or my office, rather, from 9:00 to 9:00 sometimes. Whatever time you need me, you can call me and contact me and ask any questions. Please, like I said, a live, anybody can tell me. So we need to move on. And as Clerk said, this might be a nasty, I hope it's not a nasty campaign. Just, I don't like slandering anyone. Just do what you do. Show what you've done and then approve and talk for itself. And Friday, I'd like everyone to know, coffee with the mayor? I'm sorry, coffee with the mayor on September 29. And you learn a lot about advantages and programs that COMEd will have for you and programs they can do in your home at free and no cost to you. So please, we will be having, this board will start having more and more, as Trustee Wilson said, programs, things that are advantages for you with the cooperation of this board. And I love you each and everyone, and if you can't do anything about it, I motion for an adjournment. Move back to, oh, I'm sorry. We have to go into executive session, motion to go into executive session in purpose of litigation. Roja? Trustee Williams? Trustee Wilson. Thank you all for coming. Trustee Brooks?
Both sides.
Trustee May?
Both sides.
Trustee Page?
I.
Trustee. Thank you all, have a nice weekend. Um, Mr. Rice, can I see you?